We thank you for this time again, and we ask these things in your name.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Over the roll, please.
Carrie Mott, Ward 1.
Here.
Jane Steph, Ward 2. Keri Ross, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Catherine, Ward 6.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to draw council's attention to something that I feel moved to share tonight. And that is that these two ficus trees look like Charlie Brown's Christmas tree. And these are fake trees that seem to be dying. I don't know how that happened. But I sure would like, I think we're going to have a project that's going to look towards, have something that looks a little bit, a little more healthy.
I prayed for rain.
Thank you. Trees are thinning like the top of my head.
I think somebody put too much water on them.
That might be, it might be overwatered. I don't know why I felt moved to share that tonight.
Beagle's facing the wall.
First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from September 19th. And council, you've had an opportunity to review these, and that would be the opportunity to make any edits. So if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock, you have the first item for us, please, tonight.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The first council meeting in December conflicts with the annual Christmas parade. The council has traditionally opted to change the evening meeting to a morning meeting. Your approval of this time change is recommended for the December 5th meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We are honored tonight to be able to have a proclamation. And it is the 50th anniversary of Saint Francis of Assisi Catholic Church. And we have a couple of members here tonight, Sister Diane Holland, Ms. Peggy Fritz are here. I have a proclamation that I will read. And then after that, I'll be glad to come down and present it to you along with Councilman Fox, a fellow parishioner. And so without further ado, I'll get to reading this. It says that whereas in 1947, a group of 15 Catholics began having mass above Young Brothers Pharmacy. Whereas Saint Francis of Assisi Catholic Church was dedicated in 1950 on Casville Road and served about 50 members. Whereas the church moved to its current location on Douthat Ferry Road in 1994. Saint Francis of Assisi Catholic Church has grown to serve over 800 families with a diverse membership that includes parishioners from over 20 different countries and nearly all 50 states. Whereas the parishioners have pledged $1.2 million for the expansion of the church. And the celebration ceremony for the completion of the expansion of Saint Francis was held on Wednesday, March 28th of 2012. On October 4th of 2019, the feast day of the patron, Saint Francis of Assisi. The church celebrates 50 years as a parish in Cartersville. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Cartersville, and proud parishioner of Saint Francis, along with Councilman Gary Fox, do hereby proclaim Friday, October 4th, 2019, as Saint Francis of Assisi Catholic Church Day in the City of Cartersville. And I encourage all citizens to celebrate the church's past, present, and future. Come on down and we'll get a picture and present this to you. You all enjoy? All right, next item is SU 19-04. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started with that, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. The request is for a special use to allow multifamily above commercial on 15.5 acres of 36 acre tract. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Menino at this point? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for SU 19-04. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time.
All I'm going to say is...
Name an address for our clerk.
Mary Henderson, yeah. We've given you all everything I know that we can give you and appreciate your consideration. And I think this will be a nice project for the city.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 19-04. And I will turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Randy, SU 19-06.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is also a second reading. This special use permit application is for a total pond to be located on North Tennessee Street. It's currently an existing business in the city located at 2 Dixie Avenue. They will be relocating and a bank is looking to develop the location, their old location at 2 Dixie Avenue. Again, there have been no additions or changes since the first reading, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Menino at this point?
Just trying, I'm trying to get my berries. What is right beside it? Is that Kias?
Yeah, and that's the multi-tenant building right there. They'll be going in the multi-tenant space.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for SU 19-06. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 19-06 and turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Menino, next item, please.
Yes, this next one, if you're aware, property on Center Road, part of it was, had an application for an apartment complex. It was before you at your last meeting. That particular application has been withdrawn. The adjacent portion has been approved for the development of a townhome development. This resolution acknowledges the intention of the developers of the townhome development to develop it with a private street system. And they will be requesting abandonment of the existing right-of-way with proper reservation of easements for the existing and potential additional utilities. Your approval of this resolution is recommended.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Menino on this item?
Does that, does, ask one question. Does it have anything to do with the design of the roads? Because I know, I'm not sure they're all designed to, like, you know, fire truck turnarounds.
Yeah, that, they will be designed and comply with the requirements for fire trucks to be able to turn around. The layout will be pretty much the existing layout that's on it right now.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock, you have the next item, please.
Yes, the Cartersville Community Transportation Vehicle Ordinance was before you at the last council meeting. This is a second reading. It has been revised to reflect the deletion of the recreational pass, and we've added local streets in that as well. Frank and Tommy have reviewed that along with Keith and myself, and we ask for your approval of this ordinance.
And there were no, should have brought this up in the works session, but I know last time we had the first reading, there was discussion about perhaps public safety or public works, identifying roads that might need to be on that list. And there were, there were none that need, that they felt needed to be added?
They both worked on that together.
Okay. So we're good? No, none of those roads need to be excluded? Or included, I guess?
No, there was a list that Tommy and Frank had that is included of the roads that weren't...
I oversaw that, I'm sorry.
That they were not allowed on.
Gotcha. All right. And then I know that you've already, because after the first reading, there was already some people that were wanting to call and register and do whatever.
Yes, so the plan is, right now, if it's a new purchase, you will have 10 days from the date of the new purchase to get your, your, what, your community transportation vehicle registered. That will be handled through the police department. We do need a little bit more time than after this reading for that process to take place. If you currently are an owner of a vehicle like a golf cart and want to register your vehicle, you can at any point. But if you do not have it registered and you're on a local street without it registered, then you will receive a ticket.
Okay.
So you better get it registered.
I moved that list of streets was in our package, but that's...
Okay. Well, I'll make sure we get it. But I know, I think it was in one of those exhibits, but I will make sure and get those to you all.
Okay. Thank you. And just because someone, just to clarify again, just because somebody has a registered golf cart, that doesn't mean your 10-year-old could be driving around on streets on it. You have to be a licensed driver as well, correct?
Right.
Thank you. All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of an ordinance. Ms. Brock, you'll handle that, please.
Yes, the city has redesigned its site plan for the new fire station at 15 Charlie Harper Drive. The .0832 acres shown on Exhibit A is not needed and is being sold to the abutting property owner. It is valued at $18,559. And upon Mayor and council approval, it is to be sold to Village Hill Exine LLC. And your approval of the sale of the fire station to Village Hill is recommended. But again, this is the first reading.
It's the fire station property?
It's the fire station property, yes.
All right. Any questions? Again, first reading, we'll take this up at our meeting on October the 17th. Thank you, Ms. Brock. Mr. Jones, you've got the next item, please, sir.
Good evening, everyone. We have tonight our first change order on our filter rehab project. This is a project that was initially approved by council in December of last year. The original contract was approved for $928,000 with heavy construction. Heavy is into the project now. They are actually halfway finished with the second of the four filters. And we have a series of things that have happened that have caused us to need to increase the contract. The first is, we knew there was a chance that we were going to have some leaking valves that would cause the filters to flood while they were trying to work in them. There was a $50,000 contingency in the original $928,000. Turns out, we were right. We, we thought it would be 50,000. It's 53,025 bucks for the valve changes. The second item in the change order, and the major amount of the change order, is the construction of platforms, if you will, work platforms. You know, you see these expanded metal or grating in a lot of industrial settings. So we're building these platforms. And I'm not much of a photographer, but this was my attempt to show you where they're building these platforms. And they are going to construct these things through here. It is not, I have a couple of, look at the...
I was going to say if the goal was to show us that you're not a photographer, that's excellent work.
Thanks. There's a platform going through that, all the way down the full length of the water, water plants and all nine filters. And the platforms do a couple of things for us. You can see in some of these, these pictures, the blue pipe all the way up at the top. We have to figure out how to get a ladder up there to work on those valves sometimes. And, and I have seen people doing some stuff that is ill-advised to get up there. So there, there's a number of reasons for putting these things in. One is just access, safety of employees. And the other part of this, too, is, is it's actually, believe it or not, is a part of our cybersecurity plan that if the filter control system were to ever be compromised, we can pull one wire out of the back of a computer and go down there and turn these valves by hand and run the plant by hand. And it would just allow us to be able to get to them quickly and safely. Our engineer for the water treatment plant actually developed a set of plans for this prior to the filter project starting. And they produced a engineer's estimate for construction in the amount of $281,875. That was what they thought it would cost to get platforms built through here. They asked heavy constructors who's doing the filter work, since they were there, to take a look at it and just say, hey, will you check my number and tell me what you could build this for? They provided an actual proposal in the amount of $197,338. And I think included with your package was the official letter from Weidemann saying, hey, we think this is a really good price, you should do it. I can tell you that the conversation we had at lunch was, you are crazy not to build this for this price because they did almost an identical project in North Carolina a year ago that was based on, that's what they based their cost estimate on. And interestingly enough, our plant is a Weidemann and Singleton design originally. So is the one in North Carolina. They're almost identical. So it's a very good comparison that you don't normally get. So we feel like this is an opportunity for us to really reap some savings here. There's also, you get the efficiency of not having the bidding costs and all of that that goes along. We can do this as a change order and come out ahead. All of that would basically add $250,363 to the original contract. That would bring us in right at 1.18 billion. That still fits within the budgeted amount we had for this project. So we're not spending money we didn't plan to spend. We're just not spending it the way we thought we'd spend it. So we get a, what we feel like is a bargain on the platform construction, and we stay under budget. So we brought that to you for your consideration tonight.
So again, total, for everything you're discussing here currently, the change order and to build the platforms were at 1.18 million?
That's correct, 1.178, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Bob? Now, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Tommy, you've got the next couple, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This first item is the Community Rating System application. We participate in the CRS program in order for our citizens to get reduced flood insurance rates from the National Flood Insurance Program. And we have to recertify annually that we meet the requirements of the program. And so this, we just need the mayor's signature on the application.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Tommy.
Thank you. This is, we, we also need the mayor's signature for this. This is a letter from the city to Georgia DOT requesting that federal funds be allocated and moved up into the tip for Douthat Ferry Road right-of-way in utilities. And also for the construction to be moved into the tip. The tip is the next four years of their program, of their transportation improvement program. And the MPO has indicated to us that they have the funds on their constrained list to, to request this. So hopefully, if it's granted, that'd be good news.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you. Any discussion, and if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Mr. Gillum, you're up next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Coming to you first off with a contract for wire-to-wire. They're a running company, and so they're part of the RFP that we had for programming that went out. They, they can do different running-related activities for us. They're a Cartersville company. This guy, they combined 47 years of running-related programming experience. Per their contract, they'll give the city 25% of their gross registration fees, including all non-resident fees. So we come to you asking for approval for that contract.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion, and if not, a motion?
Motion.
Okay, yes, sir.
When you say running-related activities, could you define one activity? Have a try me?
Yeah, they'll have youth and adult running clubs. And then also they'll be running different 5Ks, 10Ks. They're talking about running some kind of like half marathon as well.
Will you use a track?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
All right. Next one is a program for yoga through Belfin Bar. They've been around for about four or five years here in Cartersville. They have almost 20 years of yoga programming experience. Their contract is kind of twofold because they can be doing programming for us within our parks and within our facilities, as well as running programming within her studio. As far as when they run programming in our parks and facilities, 30% of their gross registration fees, including all non-res fees, come back to the city. And then when she runs programming within her studio, 10% of the gross registration fees and all non-resident fees come back to the city. So we request for approval for Belfin Bar to be our yoga provider.
Okay.
Just a question, did any other yoga studios apply to the...
No, sir.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Hampton, you've got the next two, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first item is the Trees Unlimited Contract and Allocation. As you guys know, we have accrued it constantly, trims our lines to keep tree lands from causing outages. The contract we had was with Trees Unlimited. It expired under the last budget year, so we're having to renew another three-year contract with them. ECG actually bid this out across the state for all of the cities under their coverage. And they came back with two contractors. We decided to stick with Trees Unlimited, which is the cheaper of the two. There was a small increase per span of about $4, slightly less than $4 a span. And this is a budgeted item. We allocate $98,900 annually for this, which we usually come in a little bit under that. So there's no change from last year. And we are requesting your approval, not only of the contract, but also of the amount of $98,900 as a not-to-exceed for the entire budget year.
Thank you. Questions for Derek on this item?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Traffic signal updates.
Yes, so as, of course, you all know, as part of our visiting session, we do have to get some of our traffic, or actually, all of our traffic signals updated. They're very out of date. The contractor that you guys approved last month was CBK. They quoted us a cost of $27,312 per intersection to do the rehab. This was a grand total of $81,936 to do three intersections. The three intersections that we've chosen are Old Mill Road at Douthat Ferry, Old Mill Road at Edouard Drive, and Old Mill at Irwin Street. We do have a budgeted line item at $90,000. So we're asking for a cost not to exceed in that amount of $90,000 to allow CBK to complete these three intersections for us.
Okay. Did anybody change to the design of the traffic signals?
No, they are...
We're just getting newer models?
Just getting newer models and replacing just some worn-out loops and sensors and push buttons and things of that nature.
And I'm trying to remember those points that you just mentioned. These, all of the new lights are going to have the above-ground sensors versus the in-ground, or...
No, I think we're still using loops. They're just wearing out, so they're going to, they're going to change them out. The problem with, sometimes you run into with the cameras is lightning.
Okay.
So everybody went, when they were...
Everything's got pluses and minuses.
Yeah, like eight years ago, everybody went to cameras and they started getting struck by lightning. So we, the loops work fine.
Are they the kind that don't get hit by light?
Yeah, yeah. Plastic kind.
All right. Thank you, Derek. Any questions? And if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an annual renewal of our GIS software maintenance agreement for $5,430.14. This keeps up with our utility infrastructure, and I recommend for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And while Chief Carter makes his way up, I'm going to ask council to add three items to the agenda. We've got a need to make, I need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to add three items to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Three items are added. We'll take those up after Chief Carter's done presenting. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Within the city, we have approximately 1,500 fire hydrants citywide. And 40% of our ISO score that we have for our Class 1 ISO rating directly involves the fire suppression systems or the hydrants in our flow. So the Water Department and the Fire Department are going to enter into a joint maintenance program that will begin this year of repainting all of our fire hydrants. The last time we've had a massive fire hydrant repaint was in 2014. And what Bob and I want to do is, we want to begin on annually. We're going to paint so many hydrants a year, and we're just getting them on a continuous rotation basis to match up with the ordinance that you passed in 2014 to make sure that all hydrants were flowed and maintained properly. So that kind of sets the table for this. We sent out an RFP, request proposal, to do this particular kind of project through an independent vendor. And we had 16 responses to come back, out of which the 16 responses to the proposal, 11 of them were disqualified. Out of the ones that did meet all the requirements, tonight we'll bring before you and asking your approval, the qualify of the low bid, which is a company called Art Threats Inspection out of Alpharetta. They gave us a price of $49.99 per hydrant for the first 300 hydrants, and then $40.99 for each hydrant thereof. We're, we have funds available to us in our hydrant maintenance budget this year to be able to accomplish a little over 500 hydrants. And we will have an extensive, extensive focus on this year's project in the downtown area, redoing everything completely with the downtown, then also moving out to some outlying areas that we flowed, excuse me, in this past year. So with respect, we request this evening an amount up to and not to exceed $25,000, which is our budgeted amount for the hydrant. And this will be jointly funded between the Fire Department and the Water Department.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Chief Carter on this? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Of those three items added, the first one is a quit-clean deed. Mr. Archer?
The New Popeyes has opened. And the company that owns that has presented a quit-clean deed that they've already signed to convey the right-of-way and the sidewalk to the city. And we would recommend you accept that and give the mayor authority to sign the deed.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock, if you will talk to us about Z19-02.
Yes, Mayor and Council. At your last meeting, you approved to table item Z19-02. At this time, the applicant has withdrawn the application. Therefore, there's no need to have the item tabled, and we ask that you remove the item completely.
Chair will entertain a motion to remove that item from the agenda.
Is that moved? Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And finally, for the added items, resolution to approve sale.
Yes. Today, we had our public auction at 1220 Highway 113 for our old blue fire station. Dempsey Auction Company handled that for us today, and we are very appreciative to them. The high bid came at $475,000. And this is a resolution authorizing the exception of this auction bid and sale of the property.
Okay. Thank you. So before you, council, is a resolution to accept or to approve the sale of that property? And I put that before you right now?
Motion to approve.
Second that motion.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Ronar, thank you for your patience. And we've got a couple of items from you.
Thank you.
Save the best for last.
I'm the mayor and council. Tonight, I am presenting a couple of engagement letters from the auditors. The city uses Kearlings, Mulligan, and Jenkins. The first one is actually for the normal, where, I guess you can say, normal audit that we... we, annual audit, I guess we go through. Basically, the letter spells out what they are, what they, that the firm will be responsible for. Also, it spells out what the city is responsible for. It spells out the procedures that they will be used, and finally, it basically mentions a price of $57,000 that the city will pay for the fiscal year 2019 audit. Second engagement letter from the Molling and Jenkins is for the annual MEAG questionnaire. The MEAG questionnaire is an annual document required by MEAG. Basically, the city fills part of it out, and the auditors fill part of it out. The questionnaire basically gives MEAG an objective look, if you will, to the city's financial statements as presented for just the city electric portion of the financial statements. Basically, the auditors will go back behind us and make sure that we've done everything fairly consistently with GAAP regulations. I recommend the authorization for the mayor, the city manager, and myself, the finance director, to sign both of the engagement letters from Molling and Jenkins LLC as submitted.
Thank you. Another question for Tom on this item. And if you would, Council, if you feel so inclined to, a motion should include approving both of those letters that Tom outlined in his presentation.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, city manager, finance director to sign the engagement letters from Molling and Jenkins that relate to the city audit and the MEAG questionnaire.
Very well done.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Finance report, Tom?
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, tonight we will be looking at the financial report for July 2019 and comparing it to July 2018. In the general fund, revenues decreased slightly by about $6,000. Expenses increased by $132,000. Two areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis, the local office sales tax have an increase of about $8,000, and billing and permits and inspection fees have an increase of about $2,000. Water and Superfund revenues increased over last July by $11,000. Expenses decreased by $364,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the Gas Fund, revenues increased over last year by $9,000. Expenses increased by $52,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchased gas, and increased capital expenses. In the Electric Fund, revenues decreased from last year by $40,000. The expenses decreased by $45,000. This is due to decreased personnel costs. Operating expenses remain the same, decreased cost of purchase electricity, and increased capital expenses. In the Stormwater Fund, revenues increased over last July by $3,000. Expenses decreased by $63,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the Solid Waste Fund, revenues increased over last July by $28,000, and expenses increased by $21,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. Excuse me. And finally, in the Revenue, in the Fiber Optics Fund, revenues increased over last year by $6,000. Expenses decreased by $2,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. One other note, unrestricted cash has decreased, and restricted cash has increased.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Tom on the finance report?
Just to note that this reflects the start of our FY 1920 budget year with this month.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other business that needs to come before Council this evening?
One question.
Yes, sir.
I don't think I did, but on that quick clean deed, did I give any of y'all the original that? I have a stack of them, and I don't think the original was in it, but...
I have a quick clean deed.
How would we know?
You have it?
I said, how would we know?
Is it in blue?
Do they all look the same, or?
I have two that are spaced together. You want to look at mine?
What, does it look like original ink or a copy?
I don't know.
You're the first one I gave it to, so if Stacy put it on top, I may-
Maybe.
No?
Here, put that down.
Surely she didn't give me the original. I've always told my office people, never give me anything original.
We've instructed them not to give you anything original either.
Yeah. She about to have it back at the office.
Very good. Is there any other business? Thank you there, Councilman Roth. I was going to call on Chief Carter for something going on in the community that I, we found out this afternoon. I want to make sure you tell everybody about it.
Well, apologize for not much advance notice on that. My bad. But it's the Georgia Firefighter Burn Foundation. We're in the process of our annual boot drive, give burns the boot. And one reason that we support this organization is that they're critical in the state of Georgia, that assisting those with the recovery after burns. And one of the primary things that they do, first of all, is 10 percent of everything we collect comes directly back to our city in our smoke alarm program, where we give out smoke alarms back to our citizens. But also, they have a youth camp, and this is an opportunity for young children who have been disfigured by the tragedy of burns to where they actually go for a week and they actually get to just be a kid. And so it's that kind of thing that this organization, one reason that we do the boot drives. And we just, we thank the citizens, we ask them to be generous, as they always have, you know, and be patient with us, but we do appreciate their support as we are out in the streets trying to help this organization.
And y'all be doing the drives, obviously started this afternoon?
They did start today, and will go through Saturday. We'll just do three days.
Corner of Irwin and Church.
Yes, sir. Well, actually, you'll see them out all across the community. We have them at various locations, four to five different locations where we have firemen spread out.
Chief McCann, does that fit the ordinance, or are they breaking the law by doing it?
That'd be all right.
They actually-
We actually have our own, we did a solicitation permit and everything, so we're good.
Very good.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other business that needs to come before Council this evening?
Who else? I'll take a chance with this one.
That's fine.
Joe Baldock, 14 Allison Circle. As you know, there's several Facebook groups out there and whatnot that whenever anything happens in the city, you see a million complaints, so I hope to get people together tonight and join me, but apparently I'm it. One of the big questions that I've seen is, does the city have any kind of five- or 10-year plan? Because what we see is, you have that large development or project going on on the north side of town. I believe it's going to be a mixed-use deal. And then the other day, we find out there's something going in. It's not really Cartersville, but on 293 and River Road, IDT, I believe, excuse me, IDI Logistics supposedly is buying property down there off of 293 and across from River Road, and they're putting in a fairly large facility over there. So as a private citizen, I'm looking at this, is there any planning here? I just see things going in everywhere, and I'm going, how can our infrastructure support this? Water, sewer, electric? And if it can't, who's paying for that? You know, I think these are the kind of questions that I have, and I'm sure other people have, but I'd hope to be here. I mean, is there a plan? Is there something, when you, when somebody comes before the Council, do you sit down and you say, okay, does this fit within our five-year plan, our 10-year plan, or that? Communities I've lived in in the past, they always had five, 10-year plans, and you could tell that because it wasn't such explosive growth, it was very carefully planned. If they were approached, for example, where I lived back in Kansas, IKEA approached our community. We were primarily a residential community. We had some small businesses, et cetera, et cetera, but our location was such that for IKEA, well, it's a nice place. Wasn't something we wanted, so we went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and forced IKEA to really make a lot of modifications to their building so that did not impact our community. IKEA paid for infrastructure improvements. They paid to rebuild the park, which was where they were going to put the facility. I don't, so I don't see that happening here sometimes. It seems like somebody comes in and says, I want to put this here, and the city's like, okay, let's do it. I may miss it, obviously, I'm not here, I don't see what's going on in the background, but-
Sure. Now, obviously, if there's something that somebody wants to do that is, and it's not already properly zoned for that, then we have obviously a rezoning, and that comes before the Planning Commission and then the us. We do have, let's kind of tuck back over there, the official zoning map. So for instance, and I think the piece of property that, the IDI Logistics that you're talking about, I don't think that is in the city of Cartersville.
I think it's outside, I'm not sure.
It is, but again, if there's a, if there's property that's already zoned industrial or already in industrial area, and it's a new industry coming, then obviously it's already been identified as being there, it meets the requirement. We're going to do that same thing if there's something that's, if it already meets the current zoning requirements, certainly have to come to us and submit plans and make sure that those plans are appropriate. I don't know that it's, and again, obviously, a lot of our industrial growth that we've tried to target is being handled at Highland 75. It's an industrial park, you know, joint development with the county off Cass White Road, where we've tried to move some of that heavy industrial qualified, or quality, you know, high-end manufacturing jobs to that part of the city, where we have invested in infrastructure and everything that's needed, and our utilities, obviously, to be out there.
Okay.
There is a five-year capital program in utilities, and a five-year short-term work program that's amended annual. That's in addition to the 10 and 12-year complex. And we probably been two, three years since we ended the complex. When we do that every 10 years, it's generally a lot. But it's ongoing.
Yeah, so it is a-
When you develop this, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
When you develop these plans, are you developing this plan to maintain the system as it is, to keep it upgraded and functional? Or you develop these plans hopefully with growth in mind down the road?
I can't speak for the utilities because they are over the five-year capital program. And they're each looking out for each utilities and put this, put their data together and amend it, and in the short-term work programs and then handle it. And we're right in the middle of that process right now. All the departments will get their data from the last one, update it for what's happened in the previous year. And it's five-year plan what we do every year.
Hey, but that's not a five-year plan for the growth of the community. I guess what I'm looking at is more, how do we preserve Cartersville but allow some growth? Downtown is rapidly kind of becoming surrounded. I mean, we're starting to go out the south side of town down there on, is that 113? On the other side of town near Rockmart Highway. I've noticed we're starting to go that way. You know, I sometimes feel that, is it, you know, another question I'm even going to ask you, this is a little sidetrack here, but is there a competition within the state for having the most fast-food restaurants in your community?
No.
No.
I didn't know if there's an award, like a Greens Award or something.
But, I mean, I can, I mean, is it your intent to want to have the government control what companies can and cannot locate it? Because I don't think that's the form of government I want to have.
No, I realize we can't do that. That was a sort of sideline, but it goes back to what I was talking about, is-
But I can't, again, if it's zone commercial, if it's zone commercial and there's a McDonald's or, you know, or whatever that wants to, if they feel like they can make money and it is commercially zoned property, then they have a right to do that. It's an area that's designated for commercial. We don't control it and say, no, we'd rather have a tailor shop or a, you know, or we'd rather have a Mexican restaurant or-
I understand.
Everybody's goal is an Olive Garden. I mean, we don't pick that, but I mean, if something is zone commercial and somebody feels like it have a commercial endeavor that's going to be successful, then they can submit plans and do that.
Okay, now, the zoning issue, I've seen several times where people have put in to rezone territories, areas. If an area is not already zoned commercial, and somebody wants to put something, a facility of some type there, some kind of business, when you look at that, do you look at the surrounding community and say, we need to preserve some of this? So let's not change that zoning. I'm trying to follow it. I mean, I know you have zoning, but I'm often seeing where you want to rezone a property so somebody else can do something commercial.
It's where an applicant will want to rezone a piece of property, and it might be that it's a commercial, it might be a piece of property that's residential or office commercial that's next to a residential property, and so it may fit that area, or it may not. That goes before the Planning Commission. We don't solicit them to do that. They approach, they fill out an application, it goes before the Planning Commission, opportunity for public input, and the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to us, and then it comes to us for two readings. There's two public hearings, and then we'll go on from there. And so it gives the public the opportunity, it gives staff who's, you know, to make sure that all the plans are in place, that if they are going to do it, it meets our development standards. And quite frankly, it gives Council the opportunity, there's, I think there's 12 different criteria that you're set to follow. It's not a subjective, it's an objective process, and it either, it either meets the standard or it doesn't. And that's how we control what happens and try to make sure that we are bringing things into the community, that it meets a certain standard and that we're not just approving everything and moving it along.
Okay. I mean, I would love to see a distinct, clear five-year plan saying, we have to preserve this area, so we're not going to allow this, and then look outside of that and say, okay, if something commercial goes in here, it's going to negatively impact this as far as traffic, infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe it's time to stop that for a little while, catch up, let all the things that are going on now, and then look around and go, okay, here's what's left of our city. What do we need to do to retain it? Because I don't know how many of you are around during the day, but driving around here during the day has gotten difficult, you know, going through downtown. I just skip it. I don't even, I could go all the way around it, even though it's inconvenient. So I'm looking at that going, I just don't see any planning. And maybe there is, I could be missing entirely, I just say there's a whole process to get there. But I go to the website, I don't see a plan. I don't see where, we need to preserve this part of the city, we need to preserve this, we need to save this for future, we need to look at this, you know, maybe I'm just missing it, but, and I'm probably wasting a lot of your time here at the moment.
You're not wasting time. You got a question, you cared enough to show up to Council, so we're going to answer.
Randy, is it the plan on the website?
Yeah, we actually have a future land use plan that is more like your representation of maybe 10 years. That's where the basis comes from, a lot of the zoning actions. Zonings, the land use plan is approved by the city council. Zoning is just a tool to get there, so a lot of those things are taking into consideration. The mayor noted there are 10 factors that are utilized when evaluating a zoning case, and discussing what went on as made evident by the state of Georgia for several years in this city.
I mean, you're answering some of my questions, that's good. I mean, as a voter, as a resident, I've really got to be more involved also, so it's partially as much my fault as anybody else's.
Not from at all. Happy to answer the question.
I'm glad you, and you don't know, guys know anything about that IDT or IDI deal over there on 293 River Road.
Don't know anything about it. I'll be looking at it tonight. I'll probably do a little search on that tonight to see what's going on.
Yeah, because I, that would just, to me, that would, that's just a nice little-
The county commissioner meets on Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. I said, the county commissioner meetings are Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m.
He meets here at 10:00 a.m.?
No, he meets at the county courthouse.
I have to go yell at him, man?
I don't have to yell at him, but you can just ask him what it is.
Well, I'll discuss it and ask him why they're putting it in the wetlands, and why they're ruining one of the few little rural structures we have, but ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I'll try, I'm going to have to make more of a habit of-
You're fine. Anytime, you know how to find me. You know how to find me, I'm pretty easy. Anytime you got a question, you let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Carrie, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
No, you can look at that Department of Community Affairs, and they have our county, joint county comprehensive plan on there, and it's a great resource if you've not looked at it.
Okay. Very good. Any other business that needs to come before Council? Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Or adjourn.